Hello and welcome to the June 4th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. The entire board is present, along with the Town Manager and the Town Clerk. There are various members of the public present. Let us stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we get started, we have one non-agenda item. We have the dedication of the Town Report. This Town Report is dedicated to Andy Buckman. Andy's dedication to his community is truly remarkable. His passion for the Legion and his hometown since 1968 shines through in his many contributions. Named Citizen of the Year in 2021, Andy's leadership has been instrumental in organizing significant community events, notably the annual car show. Now, in its 11th year, this event boasting approximately 200 cars alongside music and food has evolved into a hallmark of the summer's beginning. Additionally, Andy spearheads the 5K Race, a vital fundraiser for the Legion. To date, the Legion has donated over $50,000 to the community. Andy actively supports initiatives like the Citizen of the Year Dinner, Veterans Park, and is always willing to lend a hand or dedicate his time to support anything that benefits the people of Berwick or any veteran. His exemplary volunteerism serves as an inspiration that shows the impact one person can have in shaping Berwick for the better. Andy, please step up here.
I missed a phone up last time.
Yeah. I got one for someone.
I was gonna say, do you get enough?
I have enough.
No, thank you, Andy.
Yes, thank you very much for all you contribute. We really appreciate it. And from what I saw of the car show, it was a big success. A lot of space was taken up there.
Well, I take a little bit of the time.
Go ahead.
I want to explain to you a few things that probably most people don't know. Some of you do. I'm sure Tom does. And James, this is our 11th year that we've been doing the car show. The first car show was brought to me by the town. They were looking for something to do in 13, when we didn't have anything going on on a Sunday. So I brought the car show in. The car show then had 54 cars that came to it. Yesterday's car show was 250 cars.
Oh, wow.
And all of the money that is raised through the car show goes into Veterans Fund. All of our other fundraisers go into community funds. So, and to date, right now, we have helped 58 veteran members of the community and surrounding towns. And we've also helped 25 citizens of Berwick to the tune of $75,000. So... What we do, like, we reach out from the groups that have any veterans or community that is in need. And that's what we're here for. We're here to help anybody who is in need, any way whatsoever. For example, right now, I have a crew down to a family's home that's building a ramp for them. The man has full-blown Parkinson's, and he can't walk anymore. So the only way he can get out of the house is with his wheelchair and a ramp. That's just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, we do so much. And I am very proud to stand here in front of you and tell you that I have just been named Legionnaire of the State of Maine. With that, I'm not gonna take up any more shit on it, because I could go on for hours with everything that this post does and how much that we support the community. And in closing, I want to thank the Town Manager, Town Clerk, for all their effort that they put into our events, and some of the selectmen I've seen at our events. And I'm glad to see you there. Especially Memorial Day or Veterans Day. Those are the days that mean a lot to us. And also, I'd like to thank the people that were involved at the car show. Great Falls, they allowed us to use part of their Main Street. So we ended up adding another 30 cars. So that brought us up in numbers. But again, I want to thank everybody in the town that has helped us.
Well, we want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back to our regularly scheduled program. We have the approval of our meeting minutes from May 21st.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
One exception.
All right. First public comment. Take care, Andy. Does anybody have a public comment they wish to make?
I'm Amrita Cauterel, 42 Buttonwood. I just want to read to you our vision statement for the community garden. Create a welcoming and inclusive outdoor community space where the focus is on people, sustainable organic gardening, and education about local, healthy food choices. Thank you.
Anybody else for first public comment? Name and address.
My name is Tina Ashley, and I live on Old Route 4. And I'd like to speak to what Amrita's garden mission is. When I learned about the garden, I was very pleased and excited about the opportunity to garden. And additionally, it's very exciting to have the opportunity to provide fresh vegetables to people who don't have access to fresh vegetables. And flowers, and, you know, which is food for the soul, right? So I was thinking about it, about the garden. And this isn't about me and my desires to have a garden, although I'm very much looking forward to returning to it after many years of not being able to do it. It's more about creating an opportunity for residents, all residents. And this is a beautiful area full of farms, farmsteads, some actively farms, some are gentrified. There's all kinds of types of properties, rentals, right? Just, the town is unique in their garden, its beauty, but not in the fact that there are all types of people. And the garden, this community garden, is just gonna be a wonderful opportunity for people who otherwise would not have that, or even people who are property owners and don't have that space to enjoy their land and enjoy growing. Well, they enjoy their land, but I mean, enjoy the land in growing in Berwick. So thanks for your time, thanks for listening. But it just would only benefit, right? There's no downside to this. There's no downside. There's only an upside. And it's a beautiful, beautiful opportunity. And I thank Amrita and Dennis for making it possible. She is, Amrita, and I know you, and then I'll end it, but she has spent not just hundreds of hours, thousands of her own time. And because that's how strongly she feels about it, and there's a lot of people in the town that feel just as strongly about it and would love to have that chance to grow. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Yeah? Come right up. Name and address.
Hello, my name is Michelle Sturgis, and I live at 77 Berwick Road here in Berwick. I have tried to stay abreast of everything that's happening amid lots of things that are happening at our own homestead. So I apologize if I'm not speaking at the right time or maybe comments were later that I should have been speaking, so... But I wanted to come here today to support the project for which I understand it to be... I never knew there was a question that there wouldn't be support, but I've heard that support is needed. So I just wanted to share a tiny story, if I could. It's actually a huge story, but I'll try and make it a tiny story of my own experience with working with Berwick citizens. Back in 2020, on a Sunday, my husband and I were watching CBS Sunday Morning, and we saw a show by Steve Hartman. If you've ever seen him, he's excellent. Little blurb about positive things happening in the community when negative things are happening, people making positive things happen. And we saw a brief video of a husband, older husband and wife, down in the south during COVID when everybody was leaning out. Everybody was shutting their doors. They weren't reaching out to their neighbors, to their community at all. They made the decision to go knock on doors, prepare sandwiches, step back, leave a gift for the family, and at least meet them and say, hi, my name is Jill, Joe, whatever it is. What is your name? I want you to know I'm your neighbor, two doors down, and that I've got your back if you need anything. So I was so touched by that, that I said to my husband, we need to do that. He's like, oh, whatever. And I said, no, let's do it next Saturday. Let's go walk around and just introduce ourselves to our neighbors and let them know who we are, and we want to know who they are, that it'll help build a sense of community. Well, we didn't make it to that Saturday because two days later, a wall of lightning hit our home in July of 2020, and we lost everything. Pets, everything. We just happened by chance to not be home, but every single thing else was lost. And it was right during COVID, and it was a time when everybody was leaning out. Nobody's leaning in. Nobody's connecting hand in hand in the community to help out. And during that time, I've never been in that position before, but I cannot tell you the incredible power within a community of being given an opportunity to lean in and to do something together. And from what I understand of the community garden, this is such an event, is an opportunity to come out where you get out of your homes, you meet your neighbors, you talk, you socialize, you're not Facebooking, you're not texting, you're communicating with them, you're working on a common cause, whether for other community members, for your family, for the next, but you make friends, you network, and the community comes together. So I just wanted to share how that happened for us at a very, very difficult time. I cannot tell you, I cannot even begin to tell you the number of people who I still haven't even met today who reached out by the internet, by Facebook, who dropped off things anonymously wherever we were. Just, it was as though people were waiting for an opportunity to connect. It was as if people didn't even know they had a need to connect. They were just, they had gone so numb just being by themselves, and that that was the norm. But when given the opportunity, I can't tell you how incredibly proud I am of our town and how I'm actually glad to have instigated it. Even though I wouldn't wish the fire on anyone, it was an incredible byproduct of people being given an opportunity to lend a helping hand. And I can't tell you the number of people who said that it helped heal them. I've had grown men come to me, grown men come to me and cry and say, I never knew I wasn't healed from X, Y, Z. I never realized that. But by seeing you get out in the community and talking about it and working through stuff, it's offered me the hope to do the same. So I never intended, I never thought I'd touch other people, but it's become something that has brought out the best in our community, I think. And I think all people have that, but they don't always know how to express it. They don't always have a means, an avenue. And this community garden, to me, seems to be like, hey, there's a way I could go out and I can just kind of look around and, you know, or to whatever extent you're comfortable engaging with it. But it's a safe place, and it helps, excuse me, it helps everyone. And I just have to say, again, I apologize, there really aren't words for how incredibly powerful the kindness of the Berwick residents is and how, given opportunities like this, the town will flourish. It will flourish. It'll form more of a cohesive community over time, which makes a safer community over time. So I think it's a beautiful thing that's trying to bud and flower here if given the opportunity. And again, I never thought it was ever in question, but if it is, I just want you to know that I've seen what coming together as a community can do in giving people the opportunity to do so. It's powerful, and it's loving, it's healing, and it can only help the community tenfold. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, you got it?
One more. Hi, I'm Daniel Hook. I live at 20 Key Road. I'm also here in support of the community garden. I'm a fairly new member of the community, still trying to dive in where I can. And being part of this community garden has been a bright spot to me. Following on top of that, there are people that show up to the community garden meetings with no intent of taking home any produce for themselves whatsoever, but are specifically joining to volunteer so that other members of our community, be they older, be they just economically disadvantaged, are able to get the produce that will help them live a healthier life and get all the nutrients that they need. So they're showing up partly to gain community for themselves, but also because they love this town and the people that are here and want to see them benefit for it. Now, I've got two young kids of my own, one of who loves to dig and be in the ground. And one of my main motivations for being part of the garden is to show them how to do that in such a way that it benefits not only his desire to be in the ground, but also to benefit others and bring forth things and grow things in the process. For a boy who loves to eat strawberries, seeing him watch as strawberries grow from plants and be able to pick them and enjoy them immediately and seeing the joy on his face has been one of my favorite parts about living in this community and being in an environment where strawberries grow well. And looking forward to more of that and seeing more different kinds of produce that he enjoys because he made it with his own hands. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I will close the first public comment. We have a public hearing for CBVG Downtown Revitalization Grant. This is required, I believe, to get the grant rolling?
This is the second public hearing. The town's been awarded the grant. We parted with JCS LLC, Great Falls Construction. So Julie's grabbing the easel there for TV broadcasts. You've done a great job. She's gonna show several sidewalk segments in different colors, different phases. These are projects...
Yep.
No.
Not really. We can see color.
I can pull it up for you.
That'll be great.
Yep, no.
Like this?
I should be able to get it.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Pull that back way out there.
So some of these sidewalks, if you look on the sidewalk inventory, those are projects we've identified, I mean, going back probably eight years. So these are primarily projects that are surrounding the Edge. So this grant is for $300,000. That will be allocated towards one or more of these segments.
Go ahead.
Yeah. This is okay. Hi, everyone, I'm Julie Curran. I work for Great Falls Construction. We are developing over at the Edge at Berwick. And as James mentioned, did a great introduction, this is our second public hearing for CBVG Community Development Block Grant funding that James and I have been working on together for some primarily sidewalk infrastructure and intersection improvements that surround the downtown and the Edge site here. So what you see in front of you is the segments essentially of the funding. It won't cover all of it, but the hope is that it covers a good portion of it. So I'll just really quickly cruise through what the segments are for those of you that are behind and can't see. So we have a segment of sidewalk that goes up Wilson Street that's adjacent to the Edge. The intersection at Wilson, Jordan, Sullivan Street is another intersection that is in the running for improvement. There's some sidewalks up Jordan Street that are still sort of in development. Sidewalks down Sullivan Street. If you've walked down Sullivan Street lately, you'll see they're in need of some repair. The intersection at Main Street, the new Main Street and Sullivan Street is in need of design work to improve the access to Main Street there. And then finally, at the bottom of your screen, you'll see the intersection at the end of Sullivan Street there. There's some pedestrian infrastructure that's needed there. If you've ever walked there recently, you'll know that yourself. So yeah, so those are the sections that we're looking at for funding. Like I said, it won't cover all of it, but it'll help with some of it, which is really important for the success of continued walkability in the area and safety for vehicular traffic as well.
Does this include the putting utilities underground?
It's somewhat related, but there's a different grant where that money will come from.
This is primarily sidewalks, right?
Yeah. Just want to make sure. Are there any questions?
I'm assuming it would be done in phases. How, what would Phase B, which road would go first?
Great question. We'd work closely with the town to make sure that we're choosing the right segment to go first. I think, I mean, James, jump in if I'm incorrect here, but the purple section, Sullivan Street, where if you've been downtown lately, you'll see that we're heavy under construction up Sullivan Street. And I know there's plans to put utilities underground, so the sidewalk has to follow those. And so I think it's all, it's a big coordination effort to understand what the plans are with the utility infrastructure, for example, and putting that underground, and then how the sidewalks follow that. So, long story short, there's not, we don't have that nailed down yet, Tom, but it'll be a big coordination effort between the town and us.
Yeah, I would hope that the Sullivan Street goes first, still. That would be my preference, only because there is no real connection between anyplace else going up Sullivan Street.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a major connection right there.
How soon are we looking to begin work on this?
So the funds don't, I don't think we hear officially for the funds, James, correct me if I'm wrong, until end of the summer. And so once we hear of that, we can jump into design work. And I assume design work will take minimum four to six months, maybe, depending on which segment we're talking about here. And then we'll need, obviously, winter. We like to avoid that with site work. So nothing set in stone. But, you know, if we get funds by end of summer and work through design in fall, winter, visibly next spring, we could, once the snow, the ground thaws, get going on the first segment that makes sense.
Which that could align well with the Sullivan work that the town has with our earmark. And also, shortly after that's the Sawmill Hill and School Street realignment. So it'd be pretty transformative next year.
Yeah, I think we're all motivated to move as fast as we can, but to make sure we design it for now and years to come. So that's the intent.
Are you on the CBD Committee?
I'm not, no.
I hear there's openings.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
You had said that there's not enough money to do it all. Is there any other avenue of funds that we can pursue to complete this that you know of?
There's one other grant that's just come available. There's the Transportation Alternative Program. There's a few through DOT. There's main bike pads, which is figuring out the mix of them. So there's definitely a few options out there. And then we have infrastructure impact fees that are coming in and TIF as well.
That's great.
I think we're pretty good.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Does the public have any comments, questions? Either they all like it or hate it, I don't know.
They probably can't see it, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing for the, oh wait, we have to conclude, right?
I think it's just, hold the hearing. I think we stay, proof we hold the hearing.
We don't actually have to vote on anything.
Yep.
Cool. We have no parts of committees, no department reports. Appointments, we have two appointments, reappointments to the Berwick Sewer District, Kenneth Hall and Ben Niles. Seeing as there's no other interest in those positions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We make a motion that we reappoint Kenneth Hall and Ben Niles to the Berwick Sewer District.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I just want to comment, Ken has been there for a long time. He knows, probably knows the district better than anybody else right now other than the people that actually run it. He's done a good job over the years. And Ben, no, we appointed him four years ago? No, eight years ago, that's what I'm saying. So he seems to be working out also, so I have no problem with reappointing either one of them.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Lisa?
Right here in the only place.
Lisa, you go like this.
Is our superintendent present? She has a presentation for us.
All right.
I'm Audra Bobe, the superintendent. I was a longtime Hussey School principal, so Berwick is always near and dear to my heart. But of course, you know, we're very impartial when it comes to the whole district. And that's true. So I'm gonna hand out the annual reports, just in case you want to look at it as I'm kind of going through. Thank you. I feel awkward having my back to the audience, so I'll try.
You used to be in front of them.
Well, yes, in front of them, yes. I'm just gonna give a real high-level topic, you know, talk about our budget process because we did have our budget hearing a couple weeks ago on May 23rd with the three towns coming together and voting to move a budget forward for next Tuesday. But first, what I want to say is similar to how the town does their budgets, we, every single year, start at zero-based, which means that we start from scratch. We look at our enrollment. Our principals look at the buildings, our facilities. Coordinator and director looks at all facilities. Transportation looks at busing and maintenance and all of that. So we really start at that level, and we build up from there. And that typically starts for us, like, in September, October, November. And then at the district level, we start getting some higher-level information in, like, what is the tuition to Stanford Regional Technical Center? You know, what are insurance rates gonna come in at? How are we doing with, you know, other types of bigger, bigger district kind of items? And then we compile all that information typically around December, January, February. And the boards, our school board starts working on the budget that we have, and we present to them. And then they work through that budget. It takes quite a bit of time. We spent a very productive whole Saturday and then meetings after that on Thursday nights, just kind of going through the process. Some of the big factors that impacted our budget this year, our enrollment, even though we, even though when you drive through the towns, there's building, our enrollment is not showing that quite yet. We are down 63 students from last year, and this is the second year that we've been down. So, you know, we're mindful of that, but that does impact the amount of funding that we get from the state. So that's down a little bit. Linda?
Okay, ask questions in between?
Sure.
When you say you're down 63 students, is there a contributing factor of some students moving to homeschool? Or have you seen any indication of the needle that you have more students than normal going to homeschool? to homeschool?
The big indicator for us is that our graduating class is over 200 and our incoming kindergarten students are under 200. So that's where we're seeing it. We do, we're pretty steady with our homeschooling. We had a definite influx when we had COVID during 21.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that bounced back.
Right, but it did bounce back, you know, that has happened. So we're, you know, we're watching the buildings throughout all the towns and we're wondering when, you know, if or when that's going to occur. We do know some of the housing is, you know, coming in high. York County is very high for the price of housing and that does impact, you know, younger families that are just starting out. So we don't know, you know, what that long-term impact is going to be. So that's one thing. The other thing that impacted our budget this year is, and this has happened across the country, we had funding during COVID, the Easter funds, which helped us for educational recovery, remote learning, and health and safety of staff and students. So we're coming off of that in September. So we had to really make some decisions about things that we had in those funds to put back into our budget or to, you know, look for alternative solutions to those things. So I'll give you an example. We have Noble Flex, which was born out of COVID. And what that is, is it's kind of a, I know some people don't like the word hybrid, but it does describe it. So what it is, is that we use some of those funds to have hired teachers and a director to work with students that apply to the program, get accepted in the program from our schools. And so they're on campus in the yurt in North Berwick a couple days a week, and then they're remote the other days a week. So like I said, it was a true hybrid. But what we need to do now is we're looking for alternative sources to continue with that programming because our funding is coming to an end for that. So there are a couple of things such as that that happened. So after we present the budget to the board and they work through the entire process, they come up with a figure that they want to put together. So that figure was $49,001,797. And so that moved through and that's reflected in this annual report. So what I want to talk a little bit about, because it was unusual, is that on our May 23rd hearing for Article One, and that was regular instruction, there was a motion made to increase that by $300,000. So that occurred, there was a lot of discussion about that, and that was primarily to reinstate four positions. One position was a world language position at Noble High School. And the other ones were, there was a consolidation of specials, meaning art, music, art, PE, library, and STEAM. And that didn't mean that students were losing those specials, it just meant that because enrollment has gone down and numbers of sections and grade levels have gone down, there was a way to work our smaller schools, Knowlton and North Berwick, to have the same amount of specials, but working with less staff. So the motion that was moved forward was to reinstate the specialists as currently reflected right now and reinstate the world language position. So with that, that passed, so that hit regular instruction at Article One. And then we got to transportation. And then under transportation, there was a motion to add $25,000 back in under the transportation line to address our bus driver shortage in the hopes that some of that money would help attract drivers, because we're still down a few drivers. And it's always very difficult to find drivers. We do a lot of work and a lot of reach out, but when you're, you know, we're all competing for the same, you know, people that have CDL licenses. And that passed as well. So our budget now is up 325,000, more than what was presented in this annual report. So right now, it's $49,326,9797. And that's what's going to Tuesday. So that's kind of the big overview of the budget. We usually have Denise Van Camp, our business manager, here, and she has a family commitment. So I can answer, we'll answer any questions. Sue's here as well, and we can do however. Yeah, we can, yeah.
How much of an impact did the main paid leave figure into the budget starting January 1st?
It's significant. I can, I think it's in here. It may take me a minute to find it.
Because it doesn't start until the January 1st piece, but it's a half a year.
Right, right.
Half a year, yes.
If you're going to talk, you need to talk into the microphone.
Sorry. You can say it.
Okay, it starts in January, as Linda pointed out. I'm just going to look for it. Well, it's across everything. Like we pulled, what we did is we pulled it out of every, it's in every article because it's in every section. So let me see. Paid family medical leave, so for regular instruction, it comes into 37,786. So every, it's listed in every article under that topic, yeah. And we are obviously expecting that's going to obviously increase for our following budget cycle. Yes, yes, yes. Yep.
I have an odd question.
Sure.
What does STEAM stand for?
Science, Technology, I'm on the spot. Engineering, Art, and Math.
It used to just be STEM.
Yes, yes, yes.
For some reason, it's not connected to anything else in there. They just, they wiggled an A in there.
Right.
What is your current openings for teachers right now?
We have a fourth grade and a first grade over in Lebanon. We have a kindergarten, anticipated kindergarten at Huzzy because our registration is climbing slowly there. And we have a biology teacher at the high school. We have some bus drivers, and we've got about six educational technicians.
How are we doing with competitively recruiting?
We have seen last year and this year, less staff leaving. We had, you know, a real big problem with staff leaving and going to like York and Wells. And that has decreased. Right now, the interesting thing is right now, we've had two people, two teachers, get positions in Kidderi. So that's not typically where we see our staff leaving. One was to take over the new preschool that's happening in Kidderi, and another one is taking a grade level over there. So there's just two other things I wanted to point out when we can continue going through questions. But we put in $100,000 in this budget to look at facilities. For those of you who are, you know, in our community and you know Lebanon, Lebanon Elementary School has outlived itself. And, you know, we have a lot of information about how much it would cost, millions and millions, even just to get it to ADA, you know, at that level. And what we need to do is look at longer term, what we can do with Lebanon. We had those three building projects came at a very bad time, but we still have the issue of Lebanon Elementary School and we still have space issues in North Berwick. So the study is going to look at our enrollments, it's going to look at all of the buildings across the district K-12. It's not just, you know, Lebanon that's going to help solve the problem. It's going to be, all of us are going to have to help solve the problem with our buildings and what we can do. So there may be some movement happening, not just with Lebanon Elementary, but you know, we may be moving some students around the district. But that's a slower process, you know, we're going to get that study done, we'll have committees working together to come up with the best way to go about that. The encouraging and really nice thing about that is we're also going to include the discussion about preschool. Our district is one of the only districts that, we do not have a preschool, a public preschool. And it's, you know, we've been wanting, it's been on our radar for many, many years, but we're including that in the study to see how we can do that.
You know, you mentioned the Lebanon school. I know that school.
Yes.
It's in terrible shape.
Yes, yeah.
You know, you're going to have the study, it's going to take another year and then another year, and then you have to put it out to vote and everything is, do you have the ability to wait that long? Or are we going to be looking at temporary buildings and that type of thing?
We're fast-tracking the study so that if the budget passes, we're going to try to get everything done by December so that we, so that if we can, so if we need to put something in our budget for fiscal year '26, we can do that, hopefully, or bring it to, you know, however we need to go about that. And we do, we always have alternative plans for Lebanon. You know, one year, the roof collapsed. And that took several months and we had to shift from, you know, from, it happened on a Thursday, on a Monday, they had to shift to different buildings. So we do have, you know, a contingency plan for Lebanon Elementary. And it is, to your point, you know, it has exceeded its life, but it is, you know, our staff has done an amazing job keeping it up and it's gotten this far because of the work that has been put into it. So, yeah. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the last part of the back page is a sample ballot because we have been awarded grants to cover some HVAC projects at the Knowlton School and the high school and North Berwick Elementary School. And it's a really great deal. Just, we were awarded almost a huge amount from the state, meaning like out of all the districts that have applied, we had the most accepted. And so this piece of this is asking not only to support that, but also the funding to do that. So we will need to do some work with the bond bank to get some money out. But the state is awarding us millions of dollars for this, so it is a very good deal. We did have a hearing similar to what you just had. We had a hearing on this, that's broadcast if anybody wants to see that, just because the Don Bresnahan, who from Mechanical Services, talked about that whole process and what it's going to look like.
So, just a couple random comments.
Sure.
In my interactions with the schools, all the teachers seemed very happy, all the staff, very professional, love the program, love everything that's going on there. If I had to guess why enrollment is down, it's because we're in a generation that's having less and less kids because the cost of living is too high and some just don't want kids. I don't expect that trend to end anytime soon, so I wouldn't guess that our enrollment numbers are going to bounce back anytime soon, but, you know, maybe in about a decade or so, we can hope for.
Sure, sure.
I was reading in the news the other day that, about SuitesR not having, I don't know if they did, they lost funding from the state is what it was?
Yes.
And that's going to be affecting this district?
Do you want to come up?
So, fortunately, actually, anything in Cumberland County South, SuitesR is going to try to maintain all of the services that they provide. The situation that's hard is that there are just not enough staff. So the LCSWs that SuitesR hires and places in schools, there's just not enough of them. So we currently, we have SuitesR services at the high school, middle school, Lebanon Elementary, well, the Lebanon Schools, North Berwick, part-time. Knowlton does not have anybody and they haven't been able to get anybody this year, and it's not for lack of trying, it's just a lack of supports. So the way that the SuitesR program right now is working statewide, they're looking Cumberland Counties and York County to be probably maintained at the service level that they have right now. It's the northern part that they're really cutting services. So, yeah.
That's too bad, and I think the program is great and it's helped a lot of people, especially with this batch of COVID kids that are having more behavioral issues than kids in the past have had.
For sure. And the fortunate piece for us is we also have Spurwink services in the area, so we also contract with Spurwink to come in. So if we can't get a SuitesR person, sometimes we can get a Spurwink person to come in. Similar programming, same type of program. So we've been really, we have a great relationship with both of those agencies and we're happy that we are able to access them. But again, I just met with the director that's in our York County area last week and she said, you know, I'm going to be able to fill this and I'm going to be able to fill this, but this one's not going to happen and we're going to keep trying. So, yeah, it's a tough one.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent?
Did you say you had two more sections?
That was, those were the two points.
I was at the meeting.
Yes, yes.
And I remember, I think I remember the transportation motion, and I don't believe any of the board supported it. Is that true?
I think the complication was that because they're under a contract and the salary is contracted, that was their concern. However, they are not currently under, they don't have a union right now. That was the concern, that they were going to break, not break, but how was this going to be impact, how was the union piece of that and the salary negotiated through the union going to be impacted by that money put back in? And currently, they don't have a union, it's just forming, so they just squeaked it right in. So, yeah, yeah.
And what about the $300,000? I don't remember the vote on that. Did you all?
The vote was split.
Split.
And some of it was split due to the fact that the recommendation from administration was to consolidate because right now, the teaching schedules aren't fair. For example, like in Huzzy School, the art teacher has more classes than the art teacher in North Berwick. So when the teachers, when the administration got together, they were working to try to rectify that schedule issue. Yeah.
Back to the bus drivers.
Yes.
You said, when you're counting off number of vacancies, how many are you down, are we, I mean, are we missing a few like we do every year? Or is it, are we significantly deficient in the number of bus drivers?
We're down about two right now, which is much better.
Yeah.
But, you know, we could have some resignations coming in. It's almost like a one-upmanship, like Kenny Bunk just posted a really high rate, you know, and then like when we go, we're negotiating, so when we go up, Marshwood's going to go right up, you know, so it's just, it's immediate, it's immediate with us. So it's a little tough. But we aren't, like during COVID, we were down many, many drivers.
Yeah, I remember that, that's what I was asking, yeah. Some of the routes we had to cancel and whatnot, yeah.
Right, right. We did consolidate a Berwick route a couple years ago and it's working out fine, so we did not put that back in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no unfinished business. Tom Manager's report.
Bruce Flaherty of Spirit of America called me, and he recommended that we, that the board nominate Neil Hokason for Spirit of America Award. It's something that.
Posthumously?
Yeah, I mentioned that, yeah, and they said that's often what happens, or it's not unusual. He mentioned it's something that happens that, is that York County is involved with the Spirit of.
Yeah, we have a big ceremony up to the county building, invite all the towns in to bring in their nominees, and then we have one ceremony as opposed to having smaller ones, so we bring people up, we have the media there and whatnot, so usually a pretty nice event.
I think you probably called me specifically just because past couple of years, just we haven't nominated.
We didn't put anybody in.
Yeah, we haven't put anybody in.
Yeah.
So it might just be something to think about if we wanted to select, I think that you called because I think part of Spirit of America, they typically do who's dedicated, like town report is an easy way to nominate for Spirit of America. So we should pick someone, maybe for the next meeting, try to formalize who we pick.
Sure, put it on the agenda.
Great. Noel's Industrial, they do, they're contracted as the brickwork for brick sealing and will help seal town hall from moisture. They are available, they said fall timeframe. So for now, I'm proposing we do this project in phasing due to the cost. Each side of town hall is about $36,000. If the. Uh, we, if, if the budget passes, we'll have that to be able to do one side. Seems like the, this side is the worst side that has the moisture, it probably makes sense to go with what he calls the left side. And also...
The Rochester Street.
Rochester Street side, yep.
Yeah, that's, that's the side that gets the most infiltration, it seems like, you know, they have the two big trees next to it that keeps it shaded most of the day and holds the moisture in and you look at the walls up in the upper building and you can see where the moisture's coming through on that side.
So you're talking about like a yearly phase, like over the next four years, do each side?
It might make sense just ask for more money for the next election and just...
Yeah, I did, we should get it done, you know, it's not getting any better, is, you know, it's something we've talked about for quite a few years and we had, uh, I think it was this side done once. But, you know, that was the least affected side, so I'm not sure why that got done, but, um, you know, is, the, the town hall is, is, is the jewel in the southern Maine here, you know, no, no other town around here has a town hall like we do. And, uh, it'd be a shame to let it fall down around our years.
I think we have enough, we'll have enough funds to do Rochester Street side, the front, and be able to fix up our steps. So I think probably for an item for next budget season to do the rest. The clock tower was looked at by Jeff at Great Falls Construction, uh, he had some good news actually, he said mo, most of the work is just simple painting. I don't know if you call them the decorative fall things that fell off, I don't know, those things, they need to be replaced. Um, so we got, kinda need to figure out how to, yeah, so we could just figure out how to grab one, so either we can replicate it or buy something else that I think we probably wanna try to replicate it to make it look like it.
Yeah, when, and years ago when they, uh, covered all the eve work with the aluminum is, um, you know, there's all kinds of beautiful cove mold, molding back and behind all that, that I'm sure is just rotting away now. And, uh, it's a real shame to get rid of that detail.
So that's pretty much the work, I, I think there's some paint, which is good news, not having to replace it, but the, definitely those decorative elements, the four of them, and then that'll have to be figured out. Open space, um, there's an open space webs, uh, page on the town website and there's a survey that just launched. So you'll see flyers around town with a QR code, you can also get it on, online. SNPDC has been great to work with on this project, it's coming together very well. The ADA push doors for the two entrances at Town Hall should be delivered to a one-on-one mobility any day now and once they're delivered, they'll reach out for an install date, I have an estimate of about two weeks for those to be installed. Last thing I have, just wanna say congrats to the Legion for another wonderful car show, it's always great to see everybody out.
Yeah, it was great.
That completes our report.
Thank you, James.
Any questions for the town manager? All right. Selecting communications, I had them somewhere here. We have, uh, notice from York County, uh, about public hearing on the budget, June 10th, uh, 6:00 PM at the York County Government Building, number 149 Jordan Springs Street in Alfred, we're trying to create road in Alfred. I'm sure it'll have a big turnout.
You done?
No.
We are, you know, trying to, uh, double, uh, the attendance from last year, be it one.
All right, approval of the accounts payable. All right, we have payroll warrant number 93 from May 30th in the amount of $83,297.32. Accounts payable warrant number 94 from May 30th in the amount of $801,511.83. Accounts payable warrant number 95 from May 30th in the amount of $110,396.78. Payroll warrant number 96 from June 6th in the amount of $72,406.64. Accounts payable warrant number 97 from June 4th in the amount of $50,344.58. And accounts payable warrant number 98 from June 4th in the amount of $10,058.40. And make the motion that we pay our bills. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Terrific. Uh, right, now, new business, community garden funding request. First, I would just like to clarify any misconception about anything, this board supports the garden. At no point have I heard anything from this board that says that we don't support the garden or don't want it or don't like it or anything like that. We've always been in favor of it, especially because it wasn't costing anything of the Berwick, uh, the town of Berwick. All they wanted was the land, which we have provided. And the, the contention now is about fencing, which was part of the conditional use and being asked to pay for it as a town, um, and that's what's under discussion today. Last week, we didn't even have numbers for what that would cost, well, last meeting, not last week. Last meeting, we didn't even know what the actual number was we were looking at, um, nor exactly where the money was going to be coming from. So, uh, nobody is against the garden, we are in favor of it. We just, you know, need to be making sure that this is done in a proper way, especially because this wasn't a cost that was figured into the budgeting of the, of the garden. So James, you have a piece for us?
Just to kick off some discussions for proposals and I, you know, forward this to Dennis and Dennis, I'm sure you can pick up after I leave, that's okay with the chair. There's some costs that, um, I think are argued and I, I agree with about, um, greenway costs and greenway amenities. So we can start, start there. Regardless of a community garden, there still need, would need to be costs for greenway amenities. So that's part of that first proposal for consideration, that would come under, from TIP funds and that would be $9,500 for the walkway, $3,858 for a fence surrounding a propane tank, and up to $4,000 to create a barrier to the Sally Port. You know, the green, greenway is something that was envisioned before there was a fire station. And I think it was part of something that was part of a, um, when the fire station went through planning board, there was a future proposed path that the planning board insisted on it being in there.
Yes, I was on that board, I remember that conversation, that was a very...
What was that?
Well, essentially, we were, they were trying to get the planning for the, the fire station in and, uh, they, essentially, there were members of the planning board that wanted that area to be walkable. Like you could cut through there from, you know, the, the north side along the fire station, go down ways, what is that, emergency lane or whatever, I can remember the name of it, that, that road.
Public safety way.
Public safety way, that road there, you know, and just like cut across, you know? And at the time, the fire chief had problems with that because they didn't want people in the roadway if they were coming out in an emergency and stuff like that, so there was a lot of back and forth about that. But in general, um, there was a, a push that, you know, once everything was settled with the fire station being built and everything like that, that there would be public access to that space so people could go through.
It, you know, is the paperwork that James provided us with here has the little map on it and if you look up on there where the fire station is now, it shows it as the town gathering place. You know, so that's the 2013 vision for a greenway, so that has always been there. That had been there for more, more than, longer than that 'cause it's when the downtown Vision Plan first started working, before Envision Berwick Incorporated, that it was, that was always proposed to be public use of some kind. It's during the planning for the fire department, the fire station, originally the town wanted it up on Cemetery Road. The Cemetery Association offered us a piece of land up there and, um, we originally had plans to put the fire station and the police station up there as a consolidated station. At the time, the police chief argued that he didn't need to move, he could stay where he was. And eventually, there was a movement in town to put the fire station down there at the Esther Brook School and the town vote actually taken and it was down there. And I, I kind of acted as the lead in front of the planning board during the whole process and Noah can tell you that there was some contentious...
There was some very heated conversation about that.
Conversations is, uh, originally, there was a big push to put a sidewalk down the new roadway out to Sullivan Street. And my argument at that time was I'm gonna pay for a new sidewalk, I'm gonna pay for a sidewalk down Sullivan Street itself. And I argued at that time that we should wait a few years to see the traffic situation and see how things were going through there and then we could decide, should decide as how, what we wanted to put in there. You know, James knows, has, has talked to everything from dog parks to skateboard parks to music venues to, I personally wanted solar panels there, but nobody liked that idea at the time, but, um...
There was a discussion of amphitheater at one point.
Yeah, exactly, and so when, when Dennis and Amrita came to me talking about a community garden space, you know, we looked at several different pieces in town, um, but that piece there, you know, is perfect for it, it's the right size, it's the right sun exposure, it's in town where people can get to it and of all the proposed uses, that's the least intrusive of anything going in there. And so we've been working on that, is during the process, the chief, the police chief has brought up, you know, several times about people having access through that area. And when we started talking about the community garden, he was concerned about the privacy and security of anybody that might be in the Cruises as they drive around the Sally Port to get into the back of the, the building. It was pointed out that, well, several different points is that if the police have somebody in the back of the car, they have to drive through town to get there anyways, so people have an opportunity to see who's in the back of the Cruiser. And plus there are already houses and apartments all around there. You know, so that's when it was decided that maybe a privacy fence should be put in for the security and privacy of the police station, not for the community garden. That's when I proposed at that time that we take the money from the asset forfeiture fund, which is for people that don't understand that, that's money that the town gets through drug busts and things like that. Is, I don't remember the figure off the top of my head, James, or how much of money is in that fund right now. There's like 40,000 now?
Yeah, it's 40,000 received.
A bunch of money coming to us.
To be clear, the money is not in like a separate account, the money goes into the general funds.
Right.
But that's how much we've gotten from assets for...
Exactly, right. Is, um, and that, that's the same pool of money that the police chief has talked about using for the expansion of the parking lot in an impound area. You know, so that money is already being used for the security and privacy of the police department. So my feeling is that it, the rest of that money, the fence is there to protect the police, it's not to protect the garden. Is, all the fundraising that the garden has done, you know, Amrita and Dennis has done, you know, they've raised, you know, tens of thousands of dollars and donated tens, tens of thousands of dollars worth of time, is there is no line item in any of those grants or funds for a fence. So there is no money in any of the accounts that they have.
Can we just back up to the planning board part? This is what, this is what I...
Okay, but can we back up a little bit further? Okay, you mentioned before the fire station was built and there was a conversation that you had before the planning board and you said to look at it in the future. So I just want clarification, when they built the fire department, there was nothing in the planning requirements for this pathway you're talking about?
No, there is, there is, if you look at the plan, there's, uh...
For the fire station?
Well, around the fire station, there's a, there's a sketched line that says proposed walkway or proposed greenway.
But was it a requirement to build the fire station like this fences for the, that?
It was a condition, it was never done?
I don't know if it was a condition, but it was in the plan that was...
Yeah, it was, yeah, it wasn't a, it wasn't a condition of approval, but the planning board made the town put in proposed future path on the plan, so on the plan itself.
It was on the actual plan.
It wasn't a condition of approval that it had to be built, but it was, it was the plan board...
Oh, I, I get that, that was never a suggestion or idea, I totally understand.
But it wasn't a condition of it?
It was a condition of approval, no.
The, the, the way that it breaks down is that this was planned to be a public space. Before we even talked about putting the fire station there.
That's my second point, the walkway...
And then when we, and then when we decided to put the, put the fire station there, by we, I mean the town voted that that's where the, that's where it should go, the planning board said, this is still supposed to be green space, so it needs to, you know, what's not being used for the fire station needs to remain open green space for public use. And that was what they were trying, they were trying to preserve that and making sure that the fire station did not be like, well, now we're here, that all this space is ours, you can't use it.
I get that, but what I'm saying is, the police station was there first.
Yes.
Then the town voted to put the fire station there.
Yep.
And in the fire station, the planning board recommended that we put a pathway, but they didn't make a condition that they put for them.
Yes.
Okay, so, but, the fire station was already there and already had privacy issues before they installed the fire station.
No, the police station.
Police station, sorry, sorry, the police station was there, then you build a fire station and then you build the, the apartment complexes that build up out of the school to a certain height. So I, I guess I'm a little bit confused about the expectation of privacy from the police about it, i- in one sense. But then looking at it from, get it, then maybe we should review that, but it's, what's done is done, there's nothing we can do. It's a condition of the planning board, we can't overturn that, um, I just don't understand how it got to that point, but...
That's where I'm at, like how did we get from planning, so these are the conditions of the planning board?
Yes.
Why weren't they done, why haven't they been done before this point? It's time to plant a garden, I would think.
Because, because during this whole process is the, the, the initial investigation of the fence, the initial contact with the fence company, the initial proposal for the fence cost came through the police department. Kim Town and Jerry Locke were leading the whole thing with the fence, you know, and...
But it was their condition?
It, it's the condition that it be there, there's nothing in there saying who pays for it. And that's the, that's...
Right, and that's what we're, we're going back and forth with now, I, I get that. I just, I, I do have one question though, are you gonna charge anyone to use this community garden, is there a fee for each?
So, um, Dennis Jackson, 42 button wood. No, we're not charging people to use the garden. We're, um, our long-range plan when the garden is up and functional, that we will provide everything anybody needs to garden there. We will provide the water, the soil, the plants, the garden beds, the tools. You can, if somebody can park their car, get their water bottle and a snack if they want and their hat and their gloves and walk over to the garden and start gardening.
So how are you gonna pay for all those supplies?
So we are getting grants.
For that, okay, I see what the, okay, so then how many people potentially could use the garden? If it was, it was at full max, how many people?
So, um, let's see, uh, there's garden beds that are dedicated to providing food for the house of hope and the table of plenty. So there's volunteers that'll man that. There are beds that are dedicated to what we call the food share program, which... which is, one part of it is, is provided by a grant, funded by a grant from the main council on aging. And the money actually comes from Hannaford's. And that money will be used to create weekly vegetable boxes to give to people who sign up for the program through Berwick for a lifetime. And with the goal of serving at least fifty-one percent of the people who get those boxes being over sixty. And then, and in part of that program, there'll be monthly lunches at the garden with an informational speaker and play, a chance for our older population to socialize and engage with each other and enjoy fresh food.
Okay.
And then, another part of the Food Share Program is that we'll grow vegetables and put them outside the garden, or just inside the garden fence on a cart that's available to anybody who wants to come and get them in the, in the community, no matter who it is.
Okay, but how many beds are gonna be available, like if I'm a citizen and I live in an apartment and I want-
So, so that's, that's that part. Then there's a number of beds, and I'm, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but somewhere around, what is it?
Around sixty.
Around sixty, around sixty-
For children.
Sixty beds for the public, and that includes eight beds that are specially designed for children.
How big are these beds?
So they range from, for the children, three foot by five foot and, you know, about so high. And then the next size is a four by four, and that'll be like twenty-eight inches high. Then there'll be four by eights, and those are also about twenty-eight inches high. There'll be four by twelves, which are also twenty-eight inches high. And then four by fourteens, I think all the four by fourteens are in the, in the- in the Food Share and the House of Hope and Table of Plenty area, so. There'd be an opportunity to make this garden an outdoor community center with all the beds that are available and lots of opportunity for people to either just volunteer because they love to, and there's quite a few of those people already signed up, or people who just want a garden for their own purposes.
So James has put forward a, a possible proposal for the town to fund half the fence and for the community garden to fund half the fence. How feasible is that for you?
Financially, it's not feasible at all.
Have you gone out and gotten any sponsorships from any local businesses or anything like that?
So, yes, we have, like, some of the, the construction that's already happened has been through donations by a couple of businesses in town.
Right, but I was thinking like, like baseball. In order to support the baseball league, they have to go get businesses to support it. You put the banner up, they donate money every year. That contributes to the cost that may not be specifically associated with a grant.
Or like lawn chairs, they have-
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and we, we have some of that going on, you know, we're, we're just starting, and so we haven't fully developed a sponsorship program.
How much is in the fund, in the entire community garden fund?
There's the, so for the Community, Community Brazilians grant was twenty-five thousand dollars.
And how much has been collected for sponsors and things?
I'm sorry.
Nothing in the town account.
Nothing in the town account for that. We have a sponsorship from Domino's, even before they even opened, they offered to, to donate fifteen hundred dollars to cover the cost that we would have asked people to pay for the beds, so that-
You want to say not town account, what does that mean?
So fifteen hundred, does that, Domino's sponsorship is not in the town account?
Whose account is it?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
If it's, if it's not a town account, what account is it?
We have an account at Kennebunk Savings, because we are in the process of becoming a nonprofit, and-
You already were.
Yes. In September, Jeremy and James called us into a meeting and said they were cutting us loose and they wanted us to form a nonprofit, so we're working on that. It's a slow process, but we are working on it.
Well, you were never a town department, right?
No, we were never a department.
Through Envision Berwick originally. It, it, it's like Envision Berwick has been the, the incubator for several different groups that have spun off.
Yeah, yeah.
Subs, really.
It originally came through Envision Berwick, okay, I see.
So you have that account, like, personally or whatever, and the twenty-five thousand is the grant?
Yes, twenty-five thousand is the grant, and there's another eight thousand seven hundred and fifty that's coming in for that chef grant through Council of Aging and Hannaford's.
And the twenty-five thousand cannot be used for this, for this use?
For what use?
For the fence.
No, no, there was no, and Tom just mentioned it, there was no line item in our budget ever for a fence.
No, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
We're going, I, I know, I personally, it's because I'm going back to the planning board, like when you said, "Okay, it's approved."
Yeah, so here's-
That's where I break down right there.
Here's the thing, going through the planning board meetings and, and look, again, I'm fully supportive of, of this project. I think it's a great outreach to the town, I think it's something that's needed. However, when we look at what the planning board's intent was, and when they went through this, and you look at the conditional permit that's signed off by the planning board after your meeting, it has condition per the fence, and it actually says, "Project is fully funded." So when you walked out of that meeting, the planning board was under the intention that you had that funding for that condition to be there.
Actually, if you listen to the planning board tapes or the video recording, several times, members of the planning board says, "It doesn't matter about what we say about the fence because it'll be paid by tax dollars." They repeated that several times. They didn't, never, not once, did any planning board member say that this will be paid for by the community garden.
You have to look at your paperwork, and unfortunately, that's what, that's unfortunately, that's what we have to follow.
The planning board can speak for the estimation of tax or dollars, that's a select board authorization to do.
Right, and so I want to point out that the, that the first condition is that there will be six feet of fencing with a vegetative berm built to the satisfaction of the police department, okay?
Yeah.
So, that's, that, you know, it's indicating that it's for them, not for the community garden. It is part of our condition.
Right.
And I recognize that, but it's not for us. The planning board had the idea that they would pay for it, that, that the town would find some way of paying for it.
Yeah, but they can't.
Now then, the other thing is that, what's the purpose of the fence? You know, Chief Towne says that a certain section is about for privacy, but he also talks about keeping people from walking through the east side of the building where they crew, parked their cruisers and on up to the garden. And he doesn't really mention about privacy in that section. So the fence, and I don't remember the exact number, but it's like over three hundred feet long.
And to your, and to your point, the conditions of use do specifically say a six-foot fence, and now they're requesting an eight-foot fence, which is, which is significantly more expensive than a six-foot fence. So just in all fairness.
Just a second. And again, and again, is, as far as, no, we recognize that it's a conditional use for the garden to, to move forward. There is no money allocated anywhere else, is, so what is the board's objection to using the asset forfeiture money?
My objection to that is, I fully support this. Great, you want seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, I give it to you, you get, get the fence. The next meeting, the agenda is gonna be filled with people who are nonprofits saying-
That's the problem.
The town is gonna have to pay for ours because otherwise it's discrimination.
That's what'll happen to, here, that's what'll happen, people will come to us.
People are gonna come to us, the baseball field is gonna come to us, they're all gonna say that-
The American Legion, we, we didn't even give them a discount on their bench, so.
You know what I mean, I, that's, that's my concern, is this is a nonprofit who is now asking the town to fund them.
Let me propose it a different way, in terms of, in terms of the way that you're thinking. Cause I, I understand your thought, and it's not outside the sp- spectrum of reality. What's being proposed is greenway space, walking paths, fence, that are all on public land. They're not getting the money, they're not taking the money for their, for their funding. If the community garden fails this year, we still have the walking spaces, we still have the fence, and we still have the benefits that those provide to the public. And, and even if the community garden doesn't work out, we can still use the space behind the, behind the police station, fire station, the way that we would want to, without any future objections from the police station, from, from police chief, and if there's also walking paths there, which frankly should have been there already.
Okay, so looking at it from your perspective, they did say six feet, they want eight now, but the planning says six feet, three hundred feet. Okay, great.
Wasn't it something about the-
So two years from now, this doesn't go off, two years from now, now you have holes in the fence, it's been knocked down by kids, all this other stuff, who now maintains that fence?
I would say, on a guess, it's gonna come out of public money any which way, that it would probably come out of the police station budget as maintenance for the facilities. But i- if, i- but even if we build the fence, even if they paid for the fence, if the garden fails next year, they can't take that fence with them. And then it just becomes a, you know, a piece of public property that we have to maintain or take down. So the issue still exists.
And there's a twenty-year lease, I think we signed on this.
Yes. So, that's just the way that-
I don't like the fact the planning board put it in, but the fact is, it's there now.
Yeah.
Somebody, somebody kept insisting on doing their due diligence on the planning board.
I, I don't.
And that's how it got put in.
But what we have is an organization that came before the planning board and said, you know, "We wanna build this community garden," and the planning board in response said, "Yes, you can do it, only if you put up a fence." They didn't say only if the town puts up a fence, or only if we take it out of this fund, or only if we take it out of this fund. They said, "If you put up a fence." What if it had been a different organization that came and said, "Well, we wanna put something there, and, okay, but as long as you pay for the fence." We would still be in the same predicament here, is you're not a town, a town department, and as much as I love the idea of a community area and all of that, my biggest concern is we're setting a precedent here for, for nonprofits. And people are gonna say, "We're using tax or dollars for, you know, eliminated now people who are gonna utilize this when you have a population of like it does."
How many, how many people signed up, twelve, are there twelve people signed up? Do you say, volunteers? How many volunteers do you have? Twelve to fourteen, I think you said?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, and it's a, it's a long-term investment though, it's not a reoccurring investment.
You're right there, yeah.
And if, if another nonprofit came forward and wanted money for something that was on public land, we could have that discussion then. If a nonprofit came forward and said they wanted to build something on private land, I think we could all agree that that's a pretty hard no.
So what happens if the Little League wants to put something up at the rec field, that's public land, and they wanna do that, and they go, "We have this great idea, we wanna put this big thing up and we're gonna stand on it so that we can do this video thing and the core things."
Fireworks, everything's great.
And that's a great idea, we're gonna come here, and I want the town to pay for it, cause it's on town land.
And you're gonna maintain it.
Because it would have to come, it would have to come, it would have to go through our plan we have for the rec field, for one thing. We have that long-term plan, and we already have, you know, plans in, in, talking about money set aside for the future to do things like that, so it, I don't-
So we don't, it's still a nonprofit group looking to do something on public land, and instead raising the money to do it, they're saying, "Well, the town will pay for it."
We don't have to say what they do.
I, you're right, the, the, the issue has become that we don't get a choice in it because the planning board put it in there, and we can't-
Correct, right.
We can't undo the planning board's decision. Our decision is either to go through with it, or let the community garden flounder, those are our options.
Well, I, see, I think you're being dramatic, because-
It is, because-
I, I, I think that there are other options for the community garden.
No matter what, there's the twenty-five thousand dollar grant, no matter what, have the grant.
They have-
But they, but when they applied for the grant, they applied with a budget, like a budget line item.
I understand that, but they need to-
And then they can only use the money for the things that they budgeted.
So they need to go out and get sponsorships or other things, if that means they can't plant this year, they have to wait and do sponsorships for a year, raise the money, then, then that's it. But, but the thing is, is they still have other options, it's not, well, if you don't approve it, then the community garden fails.
So, is, we'll go back to the, the whole thing about, you know, the asset forfeiture funds and the fencing, is the town manager's already proposing, we take some of that money to build part of that fence for the police. He's talking about taking, you know, eighty-nine hundred dollars, forfeiture for the funds to fund around the impound area. You know, so we're already borrowing, already taking money to put the fence up that the police want around the impound area, which is also included in what is the community gardens.
This, this is separate only to the community garden. He didn't have this plan to build that stockade fence until, so he's proposing a compromise there.
No, no.
Tom, read the line.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're missing one part, you're reading the very first part and you're not reading the second part.
You're very involved in this.
No, it is, is when it was in front of the planning board, is, it was, the complete fence was required as a conditional use, including around the impound area. The town manager is talking about taking some of that money from the fund and using it specifically to build the fence around the impound area. So we're already taking the money to build money around that, which was included in the fence for the community garden.
Right, but that's for a town department, that, that's for a town department, it's not for a nonprofit. So what I get what you're saying is, if the fence costs ten thousand dollars and we cut out the section that goes around the impound yard, so it only costs seventy-five hundred, okay, that makes sense, because that is for, you know, police services in the impound yard to secure, to make sure no one steals from that.
No, that-
I kinda get that, but that doesn't take away from the rest of it that, that is a requirement.
The police impound area is already gonna be fenced in with a chain link fence, am I correct, James? So it already has the fence, so the stockade fence is strictly for privacy.
And I brought that up at the last meeting, I don't understand why we're double fencing that particular area.
Exactly.
And I agree with you.
Yeah, I do too.
But here we are, stuck, because the planning board-
I'll, I'll even step back. Police department in my hometown, as Linda brings up Little League, has Little League field literally right underneath it, and there's no fence back there. I go back to the day, that's a much busier police department. So again, I, like Linda, questioned having the fence all the way across it. My opinion doesn't matter in that.
Right.
As I sit up here, I have to hold to what the planning board held to the condition and what is signed on that condition of permit.
I mean, that's what we're all about, policies, that's what we do.
Let me, let me, let me pose it a different way as well. The TIF funds are specifically set aside for maintaining and acquiring green space for the town. Even though this is the community, I, I agree, it's the community garden's responsibility to build the fence, but this is still public town property, it's still public green space. This is exactly what the TIF funds are designed for, this is exactly what we have the money set aside for. And we can't use them for anything else except for green space, is that right, James?
There's about eight or nine buckets, but greens, green space and amenities is, it's a, it's a core part of the downtown vision.
They can be used for other funds as well, but I, I-
I'm just saying that I-
I'm torn, because I, I support the garden, I think it's a great idea. And, but however, I, I have a really hard time saying that we're gonna use tax or dollars to support a nonprofit who's gonna go out and eventually do this because we're setting up a precedent that what happens when the next nonprofit comes in-
And the will.
Then, then we, and whether they're on private or public land, we're now saying, you know, I think it's a great idea.
I think the public and private land is a pretty big distinction.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely agree.
I mean, it-
But it doesn't matter, they're gonna be a nonprofit, they're gonna walk in here and they're gonna go, "The planning board proposed this." We can't go on any further unless the town supports us, and I'm, we're gonna be supporting, like if you take the rec, we're gonna be supporting two hundred kids who are playing ball, and this is great exercise and physical activity- and teammanship and all this kinda stuff.
Family comes and everything's great.
Right, just as many people as that, same argument.
But again, you're also talking about operating costs versus a fixed item that is part of town property.
They have a fixed item.
We have, we'll have, we will have to discuss it when it comes up. But you, what you're saying basically is that, is if we say no to this, then we'll alleviate the conversation later. I don't think we will.
No, we won't alleviate the conversation. I'm just saying this, and I guess the other thing too is, I know that the cost of fence is very, very expensive. But for one nonprofit that hasn't even kicked off yet, you wanna spend seventeen thousand dollars. You know, it's not like they're asking for a thousand dollars. We didn't budget.
No, no, the seventeen thousand dollars is not for the community garden. That's for the green space. That's a separate issue.
So then you're talking about the eighteen thousand down below.
That's, yeah, that, that-
That's okay. So I wasn't sure which one it was, but either way, between seventeen and eighteen thousand.
Wait, how much total?
This up here is the, is the green space.
Pathway.
Pathway, walkways.
Absolutely, we should fund.
Uh, you know, that, that-
That, yes.
And that at the bottom, eighteen thousand is what is for fencing.
Right, that's the fence.
Can I clarify something, please?
Go ahead.
We are not a nonprofit. We are still part of Envision Berwick until we become a nonprofit. It's a long application procedure. We are, we are not official yet.
But you've, have you already applied? I think you just said-
We don't have the final application done yet.
You're a part of Envision Berwick. Does Envision Berwick have the funds to help with this?
Yeah.
So, um, I'd like to bring on another, um, way of looking at this. Is that the condition says fencing to the satisfaction of the police department. When I'm out purchasing something for myself, like maybe a new computer, and I go, wow, that one's really great. Boy, it costs ten thousand. Well, maybe I'll settle for this one that costs a thousand. Oh, I'll be satisfied with this.
I totally agree with you. I think you guys got, yeah, I get that.
So, part of, we could maybe examine the need for privacy because that's the highest ticket item. If you provide a, a fence that provides delineation and without, um, the safety concerns that are a big part of, um, the chief's request, maybe we can find a hybrid approach that is more affordable.
And I think that's a great idea, but the only way to get that is to go back to the planning board and get them to approve it.
And can I just say something?
Go through the police station.
Go through the board of appeals.
Oh, maybe you have to.
Oh, board of appeals.
So, I went back and listened to that whole meeting and took notes. And then I looked at, what's the name of the document we got? The finding of facts, I guess, which is the final thing.
Which is what we have to go by.
They don't match. The wording is different.
Which one did you sign?
So, the, the planning board motion was to provide, I believe it was phrased, uh, eight foot of visual barrier over a hundred and one feet, um, parallel to the Sally port. Um, that was the motion that passed along with, um, the vegetated barrier between the fire station walkway and the Sally port. So, those two conditions.
That's what we were looking at the last meeting was, we didn't understand why.
If you went back to the land and wood, and I don't know how to do this, but if you did, and that's a huge space out there. It's a, it's a lot of space. What if you made it a smaller space and a parking lot up at the front to start? That way you, maybe you wouldn't need so much fence down on the bottom.
It's not a fence for us. It is a fence for the police department.
Garden space is, the police want a complete barrier between anything in the police station. So, we could have, could have a garden space of a hundred by a hundred feet and the police would still want that barrier there.
How close is it to the police station?
Um, let me answer that. So, the proposed location of the privacy fence that the police would like built
Okay.
Um, is like twenty feet from the Sally port. Then you have to go another sixteen feet to get to the garden fence. So there's gonna be two parallel fences there. And one is the garden fence that keeps deer out of the garden. The other is a stockade fence that, uh, for the privacy. Um, so, we're over, um, about fifty feet from where the garden will be to the police port, uh, police Sally port.
To, actually not even the Sally port, the driveway.
The driveway.
Were you guys there at the walkthrough? Did you ex, did you talk about this before the fact and finding? So you talked about it then and you didn't get what you had asked for.
Talked, okay, and you say talked about it. What is it?
The fence or the whole, the, the, everything that you had to go over at the walkthrough?
We, um, well, um-
No, that, yeah, you did, no, I mean, there, there was a, there was a process that was agreed to. I mean, we, I was part of that process.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't like it was just spread out in the air.
Exactly. So there was, was, um, discussion between the police department and the community garden. And, uh, police, these departments says, uh, they would like the fence in a certain location. And we went out there and we go, okay, that's, that works for us because it's far enough away from where the garden's gonna be. Um, and then that's just fine.
And then when you went with the planning board, or did you, my question is, did you go with the planning board for the walkthrough?
We did the walkthrough.
You did.
But that discussion with, about the fence at the walkthrough came after a discussion at the police department with Chief Town and Captain Locke, where they talked about taking the money out of the forfeiture account. So as we did the walkthrough and talked about and agreed to the fence, we're under the impression there, that's coming out of that money.
Yeah, the planning board didn't know that.
And, well, so the other thing is that the site visit happens before the vote. So, they could have had a whole different discussion and came to a different conclusion and, but that didn't happen.
Is that just how, I mean, that's just, look at the gas station. I mean, it's just how it goes, you know, with planning.
James, is there a process in place where they could go back to the planning board and get clarification or redo the conditions of use? Is there a process in place for that?
Appeals or something.
No, I think, I mean, I think there probably could be a, like, um, I can look into it and I can get back to you.
And include the police station.
Cause frankly, there, there, there are a bunch of issues here and, you know. One issue is, I agree with you. What you, they discussed in the meeting is not word for word what ended up in the conditions of use. I watched the meeting. It does not line up a hundred percent. The second thing is, the conditions of use specifically say they want vegetation and they want a six-foot fence and things like that. And now, we're at the actual billing part and they're asking for an eight-foot fence, which is not part of the condition of use. So they can request an eight-foot fence, but you're not required to get an eight-foot fence. So, what I think needs to happen is the conditions of use need to be reexamined, uh, you know, either sh- struck out, amended, you know, redone.
Or a cooperation.
Yeah. We can't do that from here.
Right.
So, we need the planning board to fix that, clarify it, whatever it is, so that we can actually deal with this issue straight on, cause it, cause it's not lining up right and it's-
And include the police.
Yeah, the, I mean-
I, can I just say one thing? I know we got the letter from Chief Town and I wanna make it very clear. I do support the garden. I do think it's a great idea. This is more about, you know, the, the, you know, approval of money and how it's written. But it's also not the garden against the police department because you asked them. You asked them what they wanted and they said, well, okay, that's what I want. So, um, you know, I, I don't, and they're not, they didn't say, we demand this. It was a matter of, well, what is it? What do you recommend? Okay, this is what I want. The planning board then took it upon themselves to say, great, we're gonna put it in there as that. I just don't want it to, to come across as being, it's them imposing this on you or that, you know what I mean? Cause it's, it shouldn't be adversary. I think that if we could get this back there, there might be some cooperation about the fence.
Include the police chief.
If we include the police chief, and you bring it back and the police chief says, okay, some of this may not be, like you said, twenty-five percent of this is around their, their, where they wanna lock the, the vehicles up. So that shouldn't be in your use, the name, that should be a police department thing. They're gonna say, I would wanna use forfeiture funds for that. Okay, that makes sense to me because there are emergency services. Sure, they should, should have that. I would also be in a better, eh, I, I, I better train, I think, if there was some sort of cooperation between the police department and you guys to say, okay, what exactly, where exactly is this fence going? Is it six feet? Is it eight feet? You know, and, y- y- you know, who is the responsibility of it on public?
Yeah, being here, we need everyone to get along. Everyone has to get along and work through this together.
Yeah.
Cause do I think, do I think that somewhere along the line, something went wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, and you guys are getting in the brunt of it and I'm sorry for that?
Maybe you didn't understand.
Right, but, but the thing is, is, is that I, I just, I have a real hard time approving eighteen thousand dollars for, um, you know, a potential nonprofit. And if you were part of Envision Berwick, should Envision Berwick be paying for it? Everyone is saying, well, no, I don't want to, you should pay for it and this and that. We don't really have an answer. And so, I just make a suggestion that, I mean, if we vote tonight on the information that I have, I'll publicly say, I'm gonna vote no. If, so I would make a motion that we table the vote tonight. I'll, I'll make that a motion. And hopefully come back to another meeting where we have some better information. Maybe we invite Chief Town in and have a good discussion with him and then find out what the steps are for the planning board to help these people go through this and maybe make an amendment.
I think, I think the planning board is where the confusion is. And I think that's where we need to start. I don't think, I don't think we need to have another meeting about this. I think the planning board needs to have another meeting about this.
Well, we can't, I, what I'm saying by, by tabling it is, we're supposed to-
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that like, I'm not, I'm just saying that I don't think us having another meeting about this in two weeks is gonna change anything. I think the planning board needs to look at this, you know, at their earliest convenience.
What I meant for a meeting is, let's, I'm tabling the vote until this gets worked out, then bring it back to another meeting, whether it's two weeks or four weeks.
Pass if we vote right now, so.
The, that's, eh, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that I think that, that we need to get planning on top of this and, and then get them to get clarity.
Is it too late for them to go to the appeals board?
Well, the appeals board only meets once a quarter. I think that's a long, that'd be a longer process than going back to the planning board.
In, planning board decisions don't go to appeals board. They go to court. So there's no-
Oh, we don't want that.
Yeah, so-
So what's the appeals board though?
They, it's just like, sometimes they have it, so-
Code.
Planning board, we don't have that because it can set up instances where we have two sets of representation going to court. If planning board, if the appeals board reverses a planning board decision and that goes to court, so legal-
Similar to what we had a few years back.
So legal recommends, don't, don't let that.
Well, then why do we have an appeals board?
The appeals board is for, um, mostly code enforcement, code enforce, co- administrative appeals for code enforcement and then variance requests. Which, and then there's another third one, which is, um, request for interpretation, which never really gets, I don't even know what that looks like.
Thursday.
Yeah.
So, the last thing that James says, a request for interpretation? I mean, there's like, the motion that was passed doesn't reflect the condition that was written. That means there's like-
The request.
For interpreting.
The request from the police for their satisfaction. So, those three things don't line up. So, eh, they need to reexamine it or, or redo it completely. Whatever, whatever, whatever mechanism they have at their disposal needs to be done.
Could be joint satisfaction of the two groups, the department and you. Cause I get what you're saying. What happens if they say, you know, I wanna, uh, an eight-foot gold fence? And you're like, seriously? I mean, it should be a, a mutual agreement between the two, the police department and-
And I, and again, I don't think, the, the, I, I don't think the police department is against you.
No.
Or, you know, they're, they're just, they, eh, from what I saw in the meeting, they came to the planning board and said, we have concerns. And then the planning board did what they did to alleviate those concerns. That was basically, you know, it. And it just didn't translate onto paper when we get to reality. So, that's what needs to be fixed. Eh, we, yeah. And once we have clarity from that, we can discuss funding if it's necessary. You know, eh, eh, it could be that it's funding from the police department, you know?
And their asset fund. But the thing is, is by having a conversation with them, they may, you know, agree with you and say, okay, well, twenty-five of it is really going around our impound yard, so that shouldn't be you. Okay, maybe this could be part of the green space. Okay, and then, then that slowly decreases for you.
Yeah, or like I said, maybe you could go up further, plant one row of vegetation and just give them more space at that end. I don't know.
So, already there'd be the stockade, first the Sally port driveway paralleling building.
Yeah, it is a police station.
Then twenty feet of space, then this, which will be the stockade fence, which will be up a hill. So you're already getting elevation on the fence.
Getting sight anyways.
Okay, and then there'll be a sixteen-foot space between that fence and the garden fence. And then from the garden fence to the main part of the garden, there'll be another twenty-four feet of, um, what we call a food forest, where it'll be, um, fruit trees and blueberries and other perennial fruit-bearing bushes or, um, in there. So, we're growing a visual barrier between the main part of the garden and, um, the stockade fence and that Sally port. So, we're, we're back away from the police station driveway.
Conversation up to the police when you did the site lock?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
But you also have to think about how they're, what they deal with. You know, they're, it's all great and it's blueberries, but they're not really thinking that way probably. So just try to work with them, you know, and-
So, we, we've made a good faith effort to, um, comply with the, the agreement that we made with the, the police stations, that the boundary between the police station and the rest of the public land. So the, we've, you know, in fact, our land use agreement specifies the location of the stockade fence that they wanna build as the delineation point between the police station land and the community garden land. Or if, like Noah was saying, if the community garden fails, that land could be used for any other public purpose and that fence would be already there, um, providing, um, for the police needs. So, the, um, the fence benefits the police whether or not the community garden is there. Then, you know, so that the community garden can go away, just, you know, just not work. That fence will be there, then somebody could come and say, let's put a dog park there. And then we go, well, are you sure? There's a nice big fence there. We're good. So, the fence is independent of the community garden, other than the fact that the planning board make this linkage. There's no reality to that linkage other than a vote.
Dennis, I a hundred percent agree with you.
Me too.
And again, eh, except for the community garden failing, going away, cause I hope it doesn't. That's not the intent. However, again, somehow the planning board tied that fence to you and to your condition. And that is where, as much as I disagree with that, I can't hold my personal opinion on top of it and say, I disagree with how they did it. I disagree that the chief needs that much fence. That's again, my personal opinion on that. I have to stick to what is signed on that conditional use permit. And, and that's, and that's where, and that's where-
That's why, that's why we need the planning, that's why we need the planning board to reexamine it.
Yeah.
And if the planning board reexamines it and says the exact same thing, but puts in that the police have to pay for it, I mean, that would be clear.
Though, can they?
I don't know. I don't know if they can do that or not.
Well, you've been on the board. Can they do that?
I, 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 you know, hopes and dreams.
Or is it, is it have to pay for it? Okay, we can have that discussion.
But I mean, if it's to the, if it's to the police's satisfaction, then, like you said, it could be a gold fence. You know, they could really wanna gold fence there. So, it's, it's too vague to be enforceable, in my opinion. So it needs to be reexamined and redone.
And the other part about to the police satisfaction, it doesn't set a timeline. So we can't proceed with actually planting vegetables until that fence is built. And so, the police could take, I mean, not, I'm not- And so police could take, I mean, not, I'm not saying that they would, but there's the possibility that it could drag on for a long time before they're satisfied with the product.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Again, if, so if we can get planning to reexamine it, you, you know, change the timeline, make it more specific. You know, go back to what they actually were talking about in the meeting, verbatim, there'd be a difference that we could work with. So I, I, I empathize with your position, but, you know, we're in an untenable position as well. So it has to come from planning, and, and once they fix th- their, you know, their instructions, we can go from there and, you know, and fix the whole situation. So.
Well, we still have to come up with, with how they're going to pay, I mean.
Well, I mean, that's what I mean. Once we have, once we, once we.
Yeah, then you'll just have to come back and say, are we willing to pay for it?
Once we have the clarity of the situation, then we know what we're actually dealing with, and we can actually, you know, figure it out from there. But right now, it's too vague to even.
To even vote on it.
To even fix it. I mean, again, their, their conditions of use stay six feet. The police are asking for eight. That's not, that's not the same, those are two different things.
Right, and, but to be clear too, the police aren't demanding eight.
Yeah.
They were asked for their recommendation, that's what they gave. Did anybody go back to the police and say, I know that you're looking for eight, this is the predicament we're in. Would you be open to even, even a, a four or, or a six? Because as I look at it, the fence is here. If the community garden's up here, that fence isn't doing anything anyways, cause people can still see.
Well, I thought that you were talking about putting dirt underneath so the fence would go higher. That, I know that was in one of the meetings, I was there.
Yeah, it was, it was basically, basically achieving eight foot in, in height.
Yeah.
And that was the reason of the, the satisfaction of the police.
But that's where the eight foot comes.
So the, the one hundred and one section is the eight-foot fence that's in front of the Sally Port. And the rest of it, eh, where that eighteen thousand dollar figure comes from, the rest of it, once it starts going uphill, could be six feet, and it still has the elevation.
Okay.
Okay.
So the other thing about the berm is the fence companies would really increase the price, because they would view the, any kind of berm to raise the fence as unstable ground.
Right.
And they would just have to add that much more to the height of the fence poles that go into the ground. So it would be much more expensive, um, to have the berm under the fence than without it.
And you're not up for maybe making it a little smaller and pushing it back a little and putting a line of trees or something.
Um, we're not in a position to redesign the garden. We've already, like, moved things around in the garden to, we were originally going to have the.
Yeah, plus if they submitted it for the grant, they got to stick to it.
Yep.
Well, it can be changed, but.
Yeah, well, we, there, originally, the food forest was going to be, um, starting over by the propane tanks and running parallel to the fire station, um, equipment apron. But given the police's desire for, um, privacy, we moved that and moved the, the active area, the garden, further away from the fence.
Do you disagree that they should have privacy?
Pardon?
Do you disagree that the police should have privacy?
I, I find that, that difficult to understand, because they, they, uh, transport people through town. They drive on the other side of the building where, um, Phoenix Management has, which operates the apartments, has granted us six parking spaces, and so gardeners could be getting out of their car and being within eight feet of a patrol car passing with somebody. So where's the fence on that side of the building?
I don't know.
So that privacy thing, to me, just is a request, and it doesn't seem to have a solid basis in fact, as far as I can understand. No, maybe I'm missing something, maybe, you know, I just don't quite get it. But I don't see any value in the privacy portion. I totally agree with the chief that delineation fence that prevents movement of people where they're not supposed to be, that's important.
Yep, yep, I agree.
I agree, I agree with that.
Yep.
So, planning, that's where I would head, that's where I would talk to, get on their agenda, and, and, you know.
I'd also call Chief Town, see if you can have a conversation before you go to planning.
Have they read this?
And maybe you guys could work, you know, have that conversation.
I don't think so.
You recommended this, um, however, help me understand why. And maybe if he goes back to the planning board and says, well, after further discussion, a little bit of things. Cause that way, if you go to the planning board and you and the chief have come up with some sort of agreement, they much, might be much more amendable to amending your, your permit. Um, if, if it, if you come in and the chief's over here, and you're here, and you're just butting heads, it may be more difficult to get a, a, an amendment.
So are, are you, can I request that the board take a vote to, to refer it back to planning?
Well, we already have that motion to, to table our vote.
No.
We can instruct it back to planning. We can, we, we're, we're going to, we're going to vote on tabling the, uh, the fence for right now.
The funding for the.
Discussion about funding. I made a motion to table it until, uh, a further date down the road.
First, is that anybody, any further discussion? All those in favor? On a secondary note, I make a motion that we allocate seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars of TIF funds for, for the greenway, uh, walkway, um, in the public space.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All opposed.
Okay. So, get over to planning, get, get on their agenda, get it figured out, talk to the, talk to the police chief. Once we have that clarity, if we still need funding from us, we'll have something we actually work with. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all you do. We really do appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're sorry that you have, you had me to go through all this.
Yeah.
Thank you, Noah.
I mean, it really is, cause it's not that we don't support it, cause we do.
Absolutely. We, if we didn't support it, we wouldn't have given the land for it, the original approval.
I, I understand.
Everyone just has to get along.
So, so, um, I, I appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to really thoroughly examine this issue and to exercise your fiscal responsibility, okay? Thank you. And just demonstrating the same way that the garden has the same fiscal responsibility to spend the money as allocated, and that we don't have spare cash around. That only cash we've got is to build the garden part and to run the programs that will produce the food for people who need it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And thank you, Dennis, cause I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Well, on a side note from that, you know, it was because they missed the deadline for getting things planted at the community garden space. I volunteered to host the community garden at my house for the summer on a smaller scale. And, uh, we're hoping to have a garden bed build party this Saturday.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for that, Tom.
Is, um, no, pay attention to the community gardens, uh, Facebook page and communications, and you'll get more information from them.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. And one of the reasons we did that is we wanted to keep our promises. We made promises to the community for beds, and we're going to fulfill those promises for all the people who want them. And even more importantly, is fulfilling the promises we made to our, our, our granting agencies for feeding our community. And we, you know, we feel really strongly that we need to fulfill those commitments. So we're going to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Tom.
I'll see you guys tomorrow.
We have no quitclaim deeds, no abatements. Is anybody wants to speak for a second public comment? All right, I'll close, second public comment.
Take care.
We're going to have an executive session for discussion of personnel. We're not going to be making any decisions, so we won't be coming back out of it. Other business on agenda items, there is an election, there's a vote, there is a referendum, there is stuff happening. Six eleven, Tuesday, we're doing budgets, school budgets, town budgets. It's all, uh, and select board.
Select the select board.
Two members of the select board, and school board.
School board.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, everybody's running them up and posed on, babe.
Yeah, pretty much, but, that doesn't mean it's guaranteed.
Doesn't mean it's guaranteed.
Lucky you guys, huh?
So, please come out, voting is eight AM to eight PM, right?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Eight AM to eight PM.
Eight AM to eight PM.
Yes, eight AM to eight PM.
Yep, so Tuesday, June eleventh, come out.
Patty, you still looking for volunteers?
Not for June, but for November definitely, and future elections, always looking for volunteers.
Anybody listening to volunteer, please contact Patty.
Yes, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other items? All right, then I will make a motion that we enter, uh, executive session under title one, subsection four oh five, six A, for discussion of personnel.
The second motion.
All those in favor? Good night.
You taking our books, Patty?